You're on. Sounds good.
Great.
You guys are ready to go.
Awesome. I'm gonna mute it for now since they are just finishing up Dr. Oakley, National Geographic, and getting ready for bed.
Yeah, I told my kids that there's gonna be three doors between us and them because I keep picking up background noise on all my meetings. So I think we'll get started. We have a lot less people this time, maybe because, well, I would hope that maybe some questions got answered last week, or maybe people just want to be out and about and enjoy their summer. So.
Yeah, the Robert Frost one was much shorter. They just did kind of a quick thing. There was less questions and we were out of there in less than half an hour.
Yeah. So I'm gonna get rolling on the kind of our normal schedule and it's gonna be recorded so that you guys can take a look at it later if you want to. And then for people who can't be here, they can take a look at it as well. So again, appreciate you coming on to this and we'll continue to do this through August and probably through the first few weeks of September until at least school starts. Again, we might change the format a little bit as we get closer and be more targeted towards some sixth grade stuff or whatever it may be. But appreciate you coming on and I appreciate your patience too because, like I said last time, everything that we talk about is a draft and that's hard sometimes because I want to plan things and get things set and then move on from there. But there's just too many moving targets and too many things at play. And so, thank you for your patience for the draft stuff that we're gonna talk about. So last week, we talked about the metrics and talked a lot about the Fox Hybrid, Fox Online. I'm just gonna briefly touch on some of those. So if you weren't here last week, if I go fast through a couple of these, that's why. So if you can go back and watch those or just ask some specific questions, that'd be great. And I'll mention a couple of things about those as we go along. Talked about the hybrid schedule, what it would look like, or what we thought it was gonna look like virtually and in person. There's some changes to that. And then important dates and then we took a bunch of questions. So this week, we'll just add a few things to it. I'll review some of those things, but then get into our change with our hybrid schedule. Talk about attendance a little more specifically. We've set our Taking Care of Business Day, so I want to talk to you about that. I also attached that in the Parent Square. Added a few more important dates and then get into the questions that we didn't get to last week and then whatever new ones that you have. And so that reminds me, as we go along, at any point, you can just add questions into the Q&amp;A chat bar and I'm gonna address the ones I didn't get to last week and then I'll try to get to as many as I can. But anytime, just put them in there. And even if I answer them later, that's okay. I'll just kind of skip over it if I already addressed it. But definitely take advantage of that. Again, the state metrics is a little out of our hands. We're gonna take a look at it and the district especially is just gonna be watching that all the time. And the important date to remember for that is October 5th. And that's when we'll make the decision based on these metrics about whether we're gonna come back in person or not in November. But most of the details of this are stuff that is out of our hands at the district level. So just if you're interested in it, you can pay attention to those details. Talked a lot about the Fox Hybrid versus Fox Online. A lot of people, I made sure that I let you guys know that if you still wanted to make that decision, it's okay to still make that decision. And I'm still gonna say that now. If you're still on the fence, contact me, contact the district and we can work through that. Our major reason for having people make a decision early, even with very little information, was staffing. So we had to make decisions around the district about teachers who were just gonna do Fox Online. And if you have a high school student, I do want to say, if you have a high school student, especially if that high school student is a transfer into Silverton and plays sports or some kind of activity, there's been some new guidance on that that is very important for you to know in terms of eligibility. It's not so much of an issue at the middle school level, but at the high school level with OSAA is really important. So if you have a high school student and you missed some information from the high school, please contact them because there's some pretty significant things happening with eligibility with that. But for us, if you still want to make the decision about Fox Online and you need more information, just let me know. But that decision, I mean, we're coming down to crunch time. So we need to make the decision about whether to commit to online for the year or do the hybrid option, which means you could your student could come back in person when things are safe by the state metrics. And then again, I showed this last week. This is kind of where the high school and the middle school are doing similar things because of our size and because we tried a bunch of different other options that just didn't work out because of staffing and cohorting and all of that. So we are going with nine-week quarters and kids will rotate those nine-week quarters with different classes. And so again, if you want details on that, take a look at last week's video because I went in depth with that a little bit. This is probably, so this will be the big change I want to talk about. So you'll notice that this is a change from last week. This change actually happened the day after I talked to you last week, based on a lot of different factors. But again, I appreciate your patience because everything is a draft. And actually, what you're looking at right now was sort of our first idea in terms of how we wanted to run Fox Hybrid, whether we were in person or virtual. And then we kind of went away from that for a little while and for a variety of reasons, went back to it. And so I still want to talk about last week, if you look at what I talked about last week, it was we would meet one period on one day throughout the week. And this is basically taking what we would do in person and mimicking it at least a little bit in a virtual setting. But I'll get into the details of what it looks like because it's not gonna look exactly the same on your end of things. So one of the important things we want to talk about is the flexibility, but then the rigor. We've got a lot of content to get through and in a virtual setting, that's difficult. And so we want to still have the rigor and the content that we need, that we need to get through and that we want our kids to have so they can have options in their future. But then we understand that everyone's situation is different and so we want to have some flexibility as well. And that's why everything that teachers will be doing live in terms of classroom live sessions is gonna be recorded and then posted in their Canvas platform so that if you can't, if your child can't make it on some of these periods, that's okay. They can come back and watch it later. Now, our ideal circumstance would be that they're there so they can interact with their classmates, they can interact with their teacher, they can get help right away. But we also want to build it to where they can get the content when they need to get the content, when they can get the content, depending on family circumstances. So a couple of the reasons why we went back to meeting twice a week instead of once was we want kids to be connected to their teachers. I think the older you get, and you know, you guys, some of you have taken college classes virtually, there's very little connection. But as adults, I think we can handle that fine. But then when you get into high school and then especially middle school and lower, even though we have the Edgenuity curriculum that's going to be the kind of the meat and potatoes of the curriculum, we still think it's really important to have that connection with their teacher. And so, meeting twice feels a lot better than meeting once. Also, in those virtual settings on the teacher end, managing 30 or more kids in a virtual classroom as opposed to 15 or less feels a lot better in terms of one-on-one interactions or small group interactions. And then also, there is the case of, we always are planning on what it's gonna feel like to go back to in-person. And so if we can mimic a little bit of a routine, then when we go into in-person hybrid schedule, it can kind of flow into that and not be too disruptive. So I'll try to talk through the week from a kid's perspective of what it should feel like. And again, I'm speaking a little generality in generalities because I need all my staff back and we need to dive through the details to really iron all of the specifics out. But I'll just kind of speak generally about what it would feel like. On Mondays, our plan on the teacher end is gonna be, we're gonna have some meetings as teacher groups, AG groups. But on the kid end, they will get curriculum posted in their Canvas platform sometime on Monday, probably late morning is my guess. And it's not necessarily gonna be everything for the week, but it could be a lot of what they need to work through in the week. And so they can get going on some things on Monday. And so what we, some of us have talked about is maybe teachers that are going on Tuesday and Wednesday, maybe they push out a lot of their stuff for the next couple of days. And then we push out some more on Wednesday morning for Thursday and Friday, something like that, where we just keep them going on in a bit of a routine. But kids can also get a little bit ahead once they get the material posted. So if they're at home on Monday, they'll have some stuff to work on for each one of their classes sometime late morning on Monday. And then also, what we want to do, especially at the beginning of the year, is start out with their AG meetings, their homeroom meetings on Monday to kind of set the agenda for the week, check in, maybe do an activity or a short lesson. But that's kind of our, I mean, basically, a school parent who's watching out for them, keeping track of them, connecting with them, making sure they know what's happening. That's where we'll also push out some kind of school announcement stuff to them or anything different that's happening on those Monday meetings. And so on Monday, your child just have a mix of, they can get started on some work, but then they also have an AG meeting. And also, in some circumstances, they may have individual meetings with teachers on Monday too, if they reach out. And so this is an example of a Cohort A kid. And so if I'm Cohort A, I do that on Monday. Tuesday, I'm gonna have some set times for periods in my day, but it's gonna start with a quick, probably very short AG check-in. And it could be a specific thing or it could just be a check-in that they pop in, talk to their AG teacher a little bit and hop back out. And then they'll go through their periods at set times. Now again, I don't know those set times yet, but just for the sake of an example, say, so I'm a kid, I pop into my AG group for five minutes, I get off, and at nine o'clock is when my first period starts and that's my math class and I pop into my math class. And I talked to teachers this morning, I don't want to mimic our schedule in terms of, I don't want them doing live lessons, teaching a live lesson for an hour, an hour and a half. I don't think that's good for them. I don't think that's good for the kids. It's way too much just sit and get type stuff. And so we want to approach it with a very, with a mix of different things. And so maybe they are doing a shortened lesson, but then they're doing breakouts into little groups. The teacher can assign discussion board topics, group projects, whatever it may be. But they're doing some live teaching, but they're not doing it for the entire period. So that's one thing I want you to know is that they're not going to be going from first period to second period to third period lunch and the fourth period and just be listening to lectures for four or five hours a day. It's gonna be more interactive than that. Because at the same time they're interacting with their teacher, they're also gonna be working on their Edgenuity curriculum along the way as they go. So if I'm that kid on a Tuesday, I'm going through my periods, I have a lunch break in the afternoon, I have one more class, and then there's office hours with teachers that either they can call me into or I can request. There's a cool thing inside Canvas where they can request office hours with their teacher. And then I move on to Wednesday. I have a Wednesday check-in in the morning of my AG to get me started. And then that's when I, on my Wednesday, that's when I'm really working on that applied learning stuff. I'm working on the Edgenuity curriculum. I may be working with other students on a project that we're doing for a class, whatever it is. That's my independent and applied learning day. And then Thursday, I go through my schedule again. And then Friday, I'm back to the applied learning. And then, this is just an example of a B Cohort kid. And so it's the same thing, just the Wednesday and the Friday are the live instruction times. So that's a bit of a shift from what we talked about last time, but I just want to give you a picture of that. And this would mirror exactly what it would look like when they come back to in-person. And so they would just follow the same schedule. And so as a family, you can still be flexible in that if you guys are doing something or something is going on, they can miss those Wednesday periods, but they can always go back and access exactly what happened in those classes at some point. And so that's the flexibility, but then there's also the routine of getting in a normal schedule. One thing about attendance, and a lot of this verbiage is just from the state and from other things, so I apologize if it's not very, sound very personal. I think I mentioned this last week. Basically, attendance is gonna be taken in that a student has to interact with each one of their classes in a 24-hour period. So now that interaction, we have to define and we'll put that in a handbook and have that spelled out. But I just wanted to give a few examples. So there's the synchronous and asynchronous connections. And so the synchronous is gonna be the live stuff that's happening. So they log into that first period math class and are in the live Google meeting, they're present for math. And if they do that for each one of their classes, then they're present. They're present for that day. If they're gone, if you're gone for some reason, or they can't get to it until the afternoon, they can also do it asynchronously. So they can, if they watch that video later and respond to something, if they email that specific teacher with a question about something, if they interact with the Edgenuity curriculum that day, then they're also marked present. We're working on the backend of how do we do that as staff in an efficient way to make sure that we make sure everybody's there. But that's kind of the general thing with attendance. As long as they're interacting with each one of their classes, I mean, just like they would do in regular school, you know, they have to show up to those regular classes. As long as they are doing something in a 24-hour period with each one of their classes, they'll be marked present. This is also language that is from the state. And the last one especially, you know, students marked absent for three consecutive days or five total days or is not making progress will require additional follow-up. And that's mainly our follow-up. I mean, first of, we're just checking in to see what's happening and seeing if we can help. And so that's all that means. And we'll just track that and then just reach out and make sure everything's fine if people need any help with interacting with their teachers or any of the curriculum. So that's the basics on attendance. And all the specifics we'll have in a handbook that we send out as well. So the other new thing is Taking Care of Business Day. Normally, we do a huge Taking Care of Business Day, one very long day where everybody can come in. We have teachers kind of spread out in different classrooms. And everybody wants two things. They want their schedule and they want their locker. And so we have everybody come in and then of course, sign all the paperwork that we need them to sign. And then we give them their schedule and their locker and they can walk around and just get a feel for the school. Obviously, this year, that can't happen in the same way. And so we're doing a drive-through type Taking Care of Business Day. And we're gonna mix a few things. We're gonna mix the technology checkout with that as well. So you'll see on the bottom, the dates by grade. Sixth grade is August 31st, seventh grade, September 1st, and eighth grade, September 2nd. If you can't make one of those days, it's 1:00 to 7:00 PM. It's totally fine to come another day. This is mainly so we keep the traffic light and we can get through everybody that we need to get through. But you can come a different day if it doesn't work. For the seventh and eighth grade families who've been around, you'll know that, so on the, off of Brown Street in the district parking lot, that's our normal drop-off pickup spot on this side of campus. So that's kind of where we'll follow if there's a line. But the first spot is right outside the main office where you're gonna hand in the packet of stuff that we are gonna mail out. It either went in the mail today or it's gonna go out Monday. But if you bring that packet back, that's where we'll take that packet of paperwork. If you don't have, if you didn't get it for whatever reason, you show up, we'll have extras in bags and we can hand those to you. You can fill them out and give them back then. And then you'll make your way over to James Street and then that's where we'll have technology checkout. And Jackie Renaud and a couple other people will be over there and checking out Chromebooks to every student. One of the things that we do need to know is if you have any internet issues, connection issues, anything like that, let us know right away. But we'll probably also have somebody there asking that same question, just so we can make sure that that connection is good. Because especially with how we're gonna run things, we need to have people have good connection and all of that. So if you need help, let us know. And then, basically, we drive around the back and in one of the mods, we're gonna pull up. The student's gonna get out, go into the mod, they're gonna get their picture taken. And then we're gonna hand them a schedule and then they can head out. And so hopefully, with how spread out we made it, we can keep traffic going and keep things moving. We got it pretty dialed in last spring, so hopefully, we don't have any major backups on things. So that's Taking Care of Business Day. If you have any unique questions about that, Jennifer Wolersheim would be the person to email. She's my office manager. For those of you who know how schools run, you know that office managers run the school. So if you ask me too much of a technical question about something with that, I'm just gonna send you to her. So if you want to email her about anything with kind of exactly what's happening at some of these places, just go ahead and do that. But that's our plan. Hopefully, we can get through everybody that we need to get through. And then, lastly, this is pretty much the same as last time. I just added the Parent Forum dates. So August 20th and 27th, teachers are back to 31st. And then we go into those three days of Taking Care of Business. First day of school again is the 14th. And then those important dates for whether, especially home schedules are going to shift or not, and childcare and all that stuff that's gonna be stressful for a lot of people, is that October 5th date. That's the date that the district will decide, what are we gonna do for the next nine weeks? And so, the first possible time that we are gonna be in person at all is gonna be November 16th. So I just need people to know that and I'll repeat that every time, just it's not gonna happen before that for sure. And then when we make the decision on October 5th, we're gonna stick with that decision for nine weeks and then make another decision for second semester. So that's just important to remember because that, that's a lot of planning that goes into how family life works, for sure. So I'm gonna start working my way through old questions and then see how far I can get before we run out of time. And so, so one of the ones from last week was in regards to special ed students, is there a difference for them in regards to Fox Hybrid? So I'm taking that to mean a difference between Fox Hybrid and Fox Online. And so the major difference will just be, the Fox Online is taught by Silverton teachers, but they're not necessarily tied to the middle school. But their bed services will definitely be happen, they will happen by the specialists in our school. And so our case managers will be working with those students. When returning to school, potentially on November 16th, will the students transition to each class or will teachers move to the students? So I think I talked about this a little bit last week, but teachers will be, they'll have a home base, but then when we go to Hybrid in person, to keep the cohorts intact, I took sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade and put them in different parts of the building and then also split those into, in half. And so those teachers will be traveling to where those kids are and just rotating between those classrooms. So right now, my cohorts are down to about 30 to 45 kids, depending on the group that they're in. So that feels a lot better than where we were before, for kids and for staff. Would you be doing statewide testing? And if the kids are online, how would that work? So from what I'm being told at this point is that state testing will happen if we are in person, but it is questionable if we are virtual. And I think just like almost everything else, people are saying, well, if this is the scenario, we'll go for it. But if not, we'll have to change our plan. And so people will be working on that and making that call. And that again, will be out of our hands. But yeah, if we're not in person, I don't know if it's gonna happen. Will we receive login account info for the platforms? Yes, definitely. And so I want to talk about the platforms a little bit because all this, so much of this stuff is new. So we are in a good situation in that we have more resources than we've had before. But the flip side is, we have more resources than we've had before that we have to navigate through and figure out and then communicate with you in a clear way. And so we're trying as fast as we can. The tech department and Drew, Drew's working on some videos specifically for parents and students and staff. Staff right now is working their way through kind of independent modules to get their, you know, get up to speed before in-service, which is all, you know, off time. And so there's a lot to learn, a lot to get through. And so we will push out, I will push out whatever student and whatever parent resources I have as soon as I get them. So one thing in general to keep in mind is, so this is the, this is kind of our plan in terms of what will be the most important platforms for this year. So number one is Canvas. And that's gonna be our new learning platform or learning system. And so just think, Google Classroom, except actually made for school. And so that's gonna be probably the number one place that you go, both as a student to kind of start your day and get going. And then also as a parent, just to check in on what the outlook is for the week and other resources that are there. So Canvas is gonna be that learning platform. Edgenuity is gonna be the curriculum that is gonna be very important and it's gonna be, I think I said before, the kind of the meat and potatoes of the curriculum, the foundation of our curriculum that our teachers will add to and improve upon. But that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big part of their lives. And so you'll be able to get into both of those things and kind of look over their shoulder a little bit and see, okay, what's their week look like? And you'll be able to see that in Canvas, kind of a weekly layout by class. But then you'll also be able to get into Edgenuity and actually see where they are. And so the whole answer, you know, I don't know about your kids, but, and I was definitely this way as a kid, you know, oh, did you do your homework or where are you in this assignment or whatever? It was very dependent on how honest your child was to you about what they were accomplishing. In this, in the Edgenuity stuff, you can see their progress in a visual form. And so that'll be really helpful in terms of you weaving in some accountability with your kids at home. The third one's gonna be Google Meet. Google Meet is still gonna be an important part of our live meetings. And so that's gonna continue. And then also, Parent Square. I talked this morning, and this isn't a final decision, but I think because of all the different options that are in Canvas in terms of communication with you and your teachers and feedback that you can get in Canvas that is pretty neat, I think Parent Square is gonna be more of me communicating with you and also the district. And so there are features that teachers can use in Parent Square, but I don't want people to have to have so many different things that they log into and interact with. We want to simplify it. And so really, when you're looking at how your kid is doing, it's gonna be Canvas and Edgenuity are gonna be your main things. And then my communication and the district's communication is going to be through Parent Square. And then Wazle is gonna be the final grade book. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. So one person that I want to introduce, and it goes right into the next question, because there's been lots of questions around learning coaches. And so I wanted to tie this question with introducing Therese Kerlet. So those of you in the community know, probably know Therese or know who she is. She is, she's now at the middle school as a halftime assistant principal. And so one of the things with a school that is the size of ours, of 500 kids, is if you look other places, there's usually an assistant principal role there because it's needed. And so I'm really excited to have Therese with us. She's gonna be. I'm really excited to have Therese with us. She's going to be diving into lots of different things, but even this morning, we're throwing out ideas about she's going to be working with the title program. Maybe the tag program, ELD, a lot of those specialized programs that she can pour into and she's got a lot of experience with with the other places that she's been. So I'm going to let her talk about the learning coach thing. And then I just wanted you to, to meet her and know that she's a resource for us at the middle school.
Thanks, Brad. Hi, everybody. First, I want to add, let you know that there is a handout that you can download from the district website. If you wanted something to mark up and write notes on, because that's the way my, I know my brain works, but it's a little one-page summary about what a home learning coach is. And it also has at the very bottom, which I knew is really helpful for some families. It talks about the typical student and learning coach time required. And again, these are our, our best estimate at this point in that it's going to vary based on your student and the type of student that they are. Like my daughter's going to be pretty needy and I'm going to need to be right there and that's okay. But the home learning coach, the quick summary on here is that it's a parent or some kind of a caretaker, which it could be a neighbor or somebody, another adult that they're connected to in the community or a high school kid that they're connected with. Or a grandparent or aunt or uncle or or some adult in their life that is going to be able to help them kind of manage their day and manage their learning. Looking at, okay, what do you need to do today? Oh, you've got a meeting. There it is. Thank you, Drew, I'm guessing. Help them kind of strategize their day to that extent if they need it or just, hey, remember 9 o'clock, time to log in. Maybe that's all the student needs. They also will monitor kind of how the student is doing. So we're working on kind of a little guide that we can send out that if you know who that learning coach is going to be for your student or if it's going to be you. So you might be wondering, well, what do I do? How do I get ready for that? So we're kind of looking at a list of those things for to have in mind. And one of those things is looking at what is the best way, especially if it's a parent, you've got that dual role of a parent and a learning coach and you want to preserve that parent relationship as much as you can, as well as the school relationship. So what what's going to be the best way for you and your kid or your student to talk about when they're struggling? And you know, do you help the student write the communication to the teacher or are they feeling confident like, no, I got this, I can do it? Okay, well then go ahead and do it. So you're prompting them and in communication with those teachers to say, huh, you know, Mr. Davidson's having problems learning this right now. What are his resources for doing for learning that a little bit better? And they'll help just kind of be that guide, looking at progress and grades and, oh my gosh, you, you know, this assignment was due two weeks ago. Let's talk about what happened. Hopefully it won't be two weeks because you're checking in and kind of guiding each day. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Therese. Yeah. And and just like I said before, with other things, we, we're just continuing, we're taking a look at all the stuff we're required to do. And then we're trying to create new documents and new things that we haven't had to do before and push out to you as as fast as we can. So and that's why Therese has been such a good resource because she can, she can work on a lot of those things and I can work on some different things and we can tackle it together. So really appreciate it.
And I also want to reiterate that we understand that the majority of you are not trained educators. And maybe it's the last career that you would ever choose for whatever reason, and that's okay too. But we are also looking at how can we provide some resources so that you don't feel quite as lost or that you feel a little bit more able to be a more effective guide or or learning coach for your students or for whoever that learning coach, if it isn't the parent, is a neighbor or a grandparent, so that they feel a little more empowered and ready to to be that person for the student.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And so I may come back to Therese if we get to another question that has to do with that. One question I got right away last time was, what about a list of school supplies? So this, I think we, I think Jennifer Wolersheim posted a new supply list. Where we struggled a little bit was we're in a totally different format. And so we didn't want people to go out and buy a bunch of stuff that they didn't need. But we also know that now's the time to buy school supplies because they're fairly inexpensive. And so if you want to get something, now's the time to do it. And so we tried to put out a simplified one that we think will will work for the most part. And then if it looks like we're coming back in person at some point, maybe we put out a shorter modified one if if need be. But so yeah, I got some feedback on that because initially I was saying, no, let's not do one. But then but but I got some feedback. So we came up with a simplified one. If and when kids return to school with a hybrid model, will the kids switch class? Okay, I think I addressed that one. Sorry. What does the communication look like to parents as to how their child is doing? So this overlaps a little bit with one of the other ones that I was talking about, but I was talking to a few teachers today and I want to just, I'm just, like I said before, I'm going to be very transparent and open with you. And if that means that it sounds a little, a little muddled at the moment, I just want to tell you exactly where we are. We're going to have Wazle as our normal grade book, but now we have Canvas and we have Edge Annuity. And there's a way that from a parent perspective, you can sort of check into all three of those things. Now, the issue is that we don't want there to be conflicting information. And so that's where our teachers diving into these things and figuring out, okay, this is the one that you really need to pay attention to if you just want to see progress, but not a final grade. And this is the one you need to look at to say, okay, if we were going to have a final grade at this moment in time, this is what it would be. And so we will get very clear with that. Just at this point, we need to dive in and see which one is best for which purpose. And so but again, kind of your go-to place, your number one place is going to be Canvas as your overall view. And then to really see detailed progress to jump into Edge Annuity. Drew, did you, did you have, and you don't need to comment, but did you have anything to add to that in terms of the Canvas Edge Annuity stuff?
It was perfect.
Yeah, right. Pay him to say that. Another question is, is there a possibility of outdoor school for sixth graders? So Kevin Zinchenko is a retired teacher that just can't say retired and does all sorts of stuff for us at the middle school. And so she's my go-to person for outdoor school and I was emailing back and forth with her today. And she's got a couple of different plans and then a couple of different backup plans. And just like everything else, the the programs that she's talking to are telling her the same thing that everybody is. They're saying, well, we don't know right now. One of the programs has canceled for the fall, but they're going to open up new spring options on a tentative basis, but they're going to try, just they're going to wait to see what happens. And so, but everybody's probably going to try to get in those when they open and they're going to open mid-September. And so she's, she's on it and she's trying whatever she can. And so we were going to try to go this fall, but obviously that's probably not going to happen. But we will just push it back and try to do it in the spring. And then worst case scenario, I don't know, we get really creative next year with doing two if we can pull that off, but I don't know. So we're going to try, definitely going to try. Will there be regular grading? Yes, there'll be regular grading. There'll be new material, new instruction. You know, real feedback, real grades. And obviously, we'll, we, we have to be more flexible in this kind of world, but we yeah, we have to, we have to do real grades. And so we also want to, you know, to get them ready for high school. And so we really need to get back to as close to as normal as possible. Somebody asked about our Ashland trip that we take and did the same kind of thing with that I did with Kevin Zinchenko. Aaron Willow is our Ashland person along with Leslie Teigen. And they're on the same thing. Things are on hold right now. And they're just going to keep working on it because that's another one, a cool opportunity that we've done for a long time that we don't want to give up. And then the last of the old questions, will there be a paper packet option for those kids who don't want their kids to be online? So the short answer is, is generally no. The way the Edge Annuity curriculum is set up is, is actually interactive. Inside those modules are videos and readings and interactive questions and it tracks progress and it really gives you a lot of good interaction and a lot of good data. So really just clicking print and printing that out wouldn't be an equivalent. But if there, if there isn't, if there's a sped or a 504 accommodation that needs to be addressed, please be in touch with your case manager or the counselor to start working through that process because there's it with the way that we're setting it up to be most effective, there really isn't the ability to just make a packet that's equivalent to what we're doing. But with accommodations, we will, we'll do our best to match that. So I'm going to get to some of our new questions. Will there be designated advanced accelerated classes for math and ELA? And all students, yes, so there will be. At least at this point, we have what we normally do with math and ELA is we have based on state, state testing, star scores, teacher recommendation, kind of all those together, we have accelerated classes for math and English language arts for all the grades. So that's our plan so far is to keep doing that. Does everyone need to fill out registration paperwork? Where do I find this paperwork? If students coming from Robert Frost have already filled out the paperwork. So all of that, so anything that you need to fill out. I don't mean register as a new student, like a transfer. We have a big packet for that. Just kind of our normal yearly paperwork, which actually will be a lot less than normal because some of the things just specifically apply to in-person stuff. Anything that you need to fill out, we will send to you in the mail. And then that's what you bring back on Taking Care of Business Day and then your, and then your day. Are teachers required to report to the school and stay during school hours? So at this point right now, it's either way. So teachers can come into their classroom and work from their classroom. Or because of family circumstances or health concerns or whatever, they can do it from home. So right now, and that could always change and that's more of a district decision, the district working with the union about working conditions, but at least right now, it's a choice of whichever they want to do. For band, will that be a year-long elective still? So yeah, the electives are a little hard to especially with band inquire, it's just going to be interesting to see how we can still do that. Because like I said last week, I don't, I want those programs to continue. Just doing them virtually is just very odd. But, but yeah, we're going to, we're going to keep doing that. Right now, we have our, all of our classes in nine-week quarters. But I would like to with some classes have them continue if we can. It's going to be something that is, we're going to have to address a lot more often than we normally do. Normally, we kind of lock people into a year-long schedule. And right now, we're locking people into a nine-week and then another nine-week. And so the the good part about that though is if we want to tweak something and make it a little bit better, we can do that. But yeah, they'll have the option of doing that all year for sure. Do you know if there will be robotics? So one of our goals is to try to make sure that we continue anything that we offered before. If if we can. And so we will try to do something with robotics, even if it's just like we're approaching sports. If we push the season into the second half of the year or whatever it may be, and that's how we're going to approach all those things. And they can maybe do some virtual stuff before then, but then we're going to follow the lead of the high school and work with them in terms of in-person stuff. And so that's a little bit of a guess at this point, but I'm imagining the robotics competitions maybe are going to do what the sports do and just push it back to when they can actually do in-person events. Will the AG teachers be the same as we have had the last two years? Yeah. So how we structure AGs is they the AG teachers get them in sixth grade and are with them for three years. And that's mainly to build that connection. And to know those kids really well. And it's the same way the high school does it. So they'll go to the high school and get an AG teacher and have that AG teacher for four years. And from being at the high school and going through that rotation twice, you really know your kids. I mean, it's, it's a really, it's a really good thing. And so, yeah, we stick with the same one over the three years. The food service plan from, from the last I heard, and that is mainly coming from the district level, is that there's going to be two pickup spots in town, which are going to be Mark Twain and the high school. And then I know they're talking with Durham about do it going back to the drop-off areas as well. But that'll, that'll be coming out from the district level about the plan for that. But that's the last I heard was Mark Twain and the high school. Will there be training for students on Edge Annuity and Canvas? Is there somewhere that we can start to navigate this? So I need to look back. I think I got an email today that had an Edge Annuity, a parent Edge Annuity explanation. And I want to have some of my teachers that have gone way into the Canvas and Edge Annuity put together some links that I can then send to you as parents, just to see what it looks like and see how it works. And then once we get our classes loaded for the master schedule, to have teachers start sending stuff to kids so they can navigate it. But yeah, there's definitely going to have to be some teaching at the very beginning of school around how to navigate those systems. Because if they can't navigate those systems, then they can't get the learning that they need to. And Drew is showing something right there. Take it, Drew. Are you talking, Drew?
There is a website for Ingenuity Resources slash Ingenuity Help for Families. And we're working on putting those webs, those websites out as publicly as possible and out through Parent Square and all the other vehicles we have to communicate with families. This is a great one for Ingenuity in particular.
Thank you. And my hope, and I think I talked about it last time, is that in that second week of in-service, so the first week of September. And this plan is very much in the works, but we want to try to have a virtual open house of sorts where you can jump into teacher classrooms and when they're talking about how they're going to run their classroom and things like that. That's one of the important things that we need to need to address. And so then they, hopefully in that, at that point, they can show you what it looks like and show the kids what it looks like. And then the next week when they really dive in, then they'll be working with the kids about how to navigate that. So one question is, how can I make contact between the counselor and my son to discuss electives and get registered? So Therese, can you open the the Q and A or Drew and just respond with Hillary's email on that question?
I'll find it.
I was going to say, I got it right here. I'm good.
Yeah, thanks.
Can we switch Cohort A and B day if it doesn't work for our family? Yes. That we need to now would be great to know that because we're trying to finalize our master schedule. So and actually, guys, could you put Leslie Teigen's email on that question? The one about the Cohort A days and B days. So we'll put, we'll give you that email and just email Leslie Teigen. So are school books going to be online? So for the most part, for the most part, we won't be sending physical books home. Because the curriculum is going to be in the Edge Annuity. So yeah, it is, it is going to be online in terms of what they're reading and the videos that they're watching. So this is for Drew. You mentioned filters on the laptops. Can you explain what will be filtered and what the kids will have access to? Yeah. That's a good question. When we rolled that out last spring, it was a little too sensitive. And then we, I think we tweaked it a little bit because it was popping back with things that weren't that big of a deal. But yeah, Drew, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we'll do the best we can to keep it not so sensitive, but keyword search, we'd rather know more if a kid is at risk than not, right? So that's the idea. And Securely is the tool that we're just starting to put together and it was the tool we used last year. And Securely has a function called Securely Home that does allow some functions that are similar to at-home filters that allow some additional functionality. So stay tuned on that, but it'll definitely be an asset for using. that allow some additional functionality. So stay tuned on that, but it'll definitely be an asset for using district devices. So if I were a parent, which I am, of kids, I would use the district level device so that some of those filtering functions are already embedded. That makes sense.
And, and just on a personal level, that, that was really important last spring. We, we got a lot of, we got quite a few keyword things that came back to us that led to really important conversations with kids and families. Because you can imagine, especially in that lockdown time, in situations that were not great, some kids really, really struggled. And so that was very, I mean, that was very key for us to keep in contact with kids that were at risk. And even some kids who weren't on our radar, that it was really important. And so, and, and as a parent too, it's nice to know that there's just an extra layer of something that's helping out with your kids and what they're doing online. Another question is, oh, Therese, go ahead.
Yeah, I was typing, so I missed who, what was the question that needed another email address? So I sent Hillary's email address for the counseling question. What was the other one?
Jody Peterson asked about her, her question.
Okay. And who does she need?
Yeah, Leslie Teigen.
All right, Jody, I'm getting back to you.
And actually, and then that, yeah, if you want to, so any general questions just about the functioning of the school and paperwork and any sort of general, how does the school run? Jennifer Waller shine. And so if you just go to our website and go to staff, there, her email address is there. But Jennifer Waller shine, Leslie Teigen is a registrar. So if you have any questions about kind of either registering or transferring or files or anything like that, even scheduling issues or cohort issues, Leslie Teigen would be the person. And then when she comes back, Maricela Sprower is the attendance secretary. And so anyway, those are important people who keep, keep everything running. So, okay, yeah, there, and actually maybe with my, maybe with my next Parent Square, I'll include those people with their email addresses and kind of the main questions that they will answer for you. But yeah, they're, they're the go-to people. One question about when can we expect a case manager to contact us? My son is on an IP and I have concerns to address for his needs. So technically, teachers don't report back until August 31st. I know they're already working on schedules right now because I was talking to a few case managers today. So if you just want, can you, I don't want to, I don't want to say your name to everybody, but can you just email me personally? And it's, again, it's on the website, just davis underscore Brett at Silver Falls. Just email me personally and then I'll connect you with who you need to talk to. Because we, we can figure some stuff out before they officially come back. So yeah, just if you could reach out, that'd be great. And so before we're, we're done, we're about done, I think I got through most of those. Oh, one more question. Can we do the Taking Care of Business for multiple grade levels the same? Yes, 100%. If, if you've got a sixth and eighth grader, just come on one day. And again, if you can't make the grade day specifically, just come whenever you can. I mean, the main reason we separate those is, is for our own flow of traffic and the amount of people we would have to deal with. And we don't want, the last thing I want is everyone to show up and get irritated with us before school even starts. So that's why we break it apart. But whatever works for your schedule, just come and we'll take care of you. So before we go, I, next week, I want to, I'm hopefully going to have a couple of guests on. I scared some of my staff away because I was calling them out last week, saying if they would keep texting me during this, then I'm going to make them be a part of it. So I talked to a few, Jackie Renaud will be with me next week talking about, a little bit about sixth grade stuff. Cause she, you know, if you know Jackie, she worked at Robert Frost forever. And then I got her at the middle school. And so she's a great resource for that transition from Robert Frost to the middle school. And then I just want her to talk through a little bit about that. And then she does one of the classes and then a couple of the electives. And you know, you to hear from her. And then also I'm trying to convince a few other teachers, Katie Ross in particular, to come talk about what they've learned about Canvas and edgenuity from their perspective. Because again, I, I, you only want to hear from me so much. You, you want to hear from the teachers and what's happening in the classroom. So I'm going to, I'll put some nice pressure on a couple of my teachers to, who don't want to, but to get on here and talk to you a little bit about how Canvas will look in their classroom and how edgenuity will look, at least in a general level, so you can start getting a taste of what that, what that looks like. So that's, that's up for next week. And then anything that, again, anything that is new, I, I will, I'll bring it to this meeting. And any questions that you have that you think might take me a while to figure out, just again, email me, do it through Parent Square, whatever you need to do. And I'll, I'll address the questions the next week. And then, so, okay, so the last thing before we're done, will there be creative ways to do assemblies, et cetera, during virtual learning? So I'll, I'll have Jackie talk about some of the things she did last spring. Last spring, we, every day of closing, we posted something on Facebook or Instagram every single day. And that is mainly to do with a lot of our staff, but a lot to do with Jackie and her working with leadership kids and just coming up with fun ideas to get us through the really weird time. And so we have some plans and some ideas for some creative stuff because I think we need it. And, and so Jackie's my go-to person for that as well. So I'll try to get her to think of some of those ideas so she can talk about that next week. And, and anyway, so again, I really appreciate it. I appreciate your patience. If you have any questions about any of it, email me. And leave a message at the school and I'll, I'll call you back. I just want you guys to have as much information as I have so that you can plan and get ready for the year. And again, I wish first day of school, I was out in front, seeing everybody come in. But that's not where we are, but we'll try to make it the best we can. So again, thank you. Appreciate you coming and I will see you next week.